Keep going live and.
Okay, Mayor, sorry about that delay.
Not a problem. Thank you very much. Good evening. Before we get started with tonight's meeting, would you join me in a word of prayer? We come here tonight united in our work for the city and the community we call home. We are grateful for our citizens who volunteer their time and talents and for city staff who choose to work here and share their knowledge and expertise. May we be mindful in our thoughts, reasonable in our deliberations, and careful with our decisions. Amen. So, good evening again, and welcome to our City Council Meeting of August 4th, 2020. I now call the meeting to order, and I would like to ask Ms. Vincent, our City Secretary, if anyone has signed up for the open forum.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then we will move to items three and four, the consent agenda. If any members would like to remove anything for discussion or questions, and if not, the Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to pass the consent agenda as it's written.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as it is written. If no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. And then to our regular agenda, we are going to start with number five. Receive report regarding and consider approval of city's partially self-funded health insurance plan and ancillary benefits, and authorization of the city manager to execute documentation necessary for placing in effect the plan and benefits. And we're being joined by Jeff Summers with Bancorp South Insurance Services. Good evening.
Good afternoon. How's everybody doing?
Doing very well, thank you.
Everybody can hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to share my screen with everyone. I think everyone was provided a PowerPoint presentation, a hard copy, but if it's okay with you all, I will go ahead and just share my screen and go through that presentation, if that's okay.
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay. Whereabouts? Here? Right here? Give me just a second. Making sure this is, okay, entire screen there. Share. Yeah, okay, there you go. Now, you can do this. By the PowerPoint. Okay. There we go. Okay. Sorry about that. Had to have my wonderful IT person making sure we got all this done correctly. So can everybody see the screen okay?
Yes, I believe so.
All right, perfect. All right. Well, thank you guys again for allowing me to come on and speak to you guys this evening. We had some really good meetings regarding the health insurance this year, and so, and I think we've come to some pretty good conclusions. Just, I'll kind of walk through this again. I know a lot of you have seen this type of presentation before that I've presented. Getting just a little bit of a background, again, about what the city actually offers to the employees and dependents of the city of Nacogdoches. So they do offer a self-insured health plan, or partially self-insured health plan through Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, and also offers ancillary coverages to the employees and dependents. Life insurance is actually a paid benefit for the employees, and this year we're also going to actually have an action item on dental insurance to be paid for by the city. The rest of the ancillary coverages are voluntary to long-term disability and vision insurance. Just to kind of recap of how the claims have gone, really year over year, and this is through May, you're going to see a little bit different than what I showed last year. Last year I showed net medical claims, but I thought it was important this year because we really had some really large claims this year, individual large claims. So our gross medical claims paid year over year is up 40%. Last year we had a little over $2.3 million at this same time compared to $3.2 million this year. Now then we get down to the net medical claims, and you're going to see that actually it's lower this year than it was last year. That's because there were some big claims that went over the actual reinsurance stop-loss level of $100,000. And so, all those, all that money comes back to the city. And so you'll see that that's happened this year, and so there was a lot of refunds given by Blue Cross Blue Shield because there were some large claims that went over the $100,000. Then there was the pharmacy claims tape, which is actually a 4% decrease, which is an unusual trend in our industry. I think Garth would even agree that usually you're seeing pharmacy claims go up instead of down in our health plans. Advent and reinsurance costs were up about $100,000 year over year. That was a 16.5% increase, mainly reinsurance costs. The administrative costs have actually come down over the years, but reinsurance costs have increased in just little by little every year, increased a little bit each year. So, but the total cost over a 12 over 12 period is actually almost flat. And you can really look at over a two-year, over a two-year period, and that's been the case, and you can go back a year before that, we're really running close to right at $3 million of overall liability to the city before any payroll deductions have come out of anybody's paychecks. Wanted to also, when I mentioned the large claims this year, I thought it was a very interesting slide I wanted to show you. I think I left this out last year, but this was one that I thought was important. So this year, June through May, we've had, we had one claimant that went $1,690,000. And then we had another couple of claimants that were over $100,000. So that was the big, that was the big reimbursement that Blue Cross Blue Shield gave back to the city, because remember, anything over $100,000 is reimbursed back to the city. Where last year there was four claims that were over $100,000. And so I thought it was interesting just to see how many big claims we actually have when you're looking at the overall cost. 12 claimants make up a pretty big number of the overall spend of the city's health plan. I also thought it was interesting because we were worried about what Blue Cross was going to do on their individual stop-loss. You heard me say earlier that the reinsurance costs have gone up over the years. Well, anytime that Blue Cross pays out a lot more money than they receive in premium, that obviously leads to increases in the reinsurance premium. I wanted to give you just a fully a four-year history of what Blue Cross Blue Shield has actually collected in premium for reinsurance and what they've actually paid out. And so that was something that was, we talked about that a lot in our meeting, and we were really worked with Blue Cross Blue Shield to keep our reinsurance costs down and our fixed costs down for the year. This is something I think that everyone should be very, very proud of, especially over the last four years. We have probably the highest fund balance that we've ever had over the last two or three years. It's so healthy to have at least a million-dollar fund surplus, and we have had that for the last four years. I just asked Pam before the meeting what our current, what our current fund balance actually is through July 31st, and it's up over $1,505,000, which is, which is great news. It was $1,530,000. So we're moving in the right direction there, which is, which is great. That really helps when, when years that we don't have as good a claims history. So this is the current funding rates that the city actually contributes and the employees. You'll see that the plan, there's two different plans. There's a base plan and a buy-up plan. And the city contributes equal amounts to the base plan and the buy-up plan, and for all four levels of coverage: employee only, employee spouse, employee children, doesn't matter how many children they have, or full family, which includes spouse and kids. And then you'll see what the actually employee cost on a monthly basis. So this would be their monthly payroll deduction. And for many, many years, there's at least been a plan that the employees would not pay anything into, that the city would pay the entire amount, and that still holds true today. They can do a buy-up plan if they'd like to, to have a little bit better plan design. So then you see down here the estimated contributions from both the city and employees. So currently, on a plan year basis, the contributions from the city are a little over $3.1 million. The expected cost for the 2019-2020 plan year was 2.775. The maximum costs were 3.18, and we're coming in right in the middle of that. So in the last 12 months, we've been right at 2.9, almost $3 million. So it's been really almost an expected year again, and we've actually increased our fund balance and accumulations over the last few months. So then for the recommended funding rates, we're going to recommend that we do not have an increase to either the city contributions or the employee contributions, which I think will be very welcome in these times, especially to people that have dependent coverage and need, need insurance for their spouse and children. So the recommendation was to not increase that or increase the city contributions as well. The contributions from the city and employees are expected to be a little over $3 million this year. There is some calculations that Pam does on this to come up with his contributions, and it's based on the number of employees that I think the city lots for in a plan year, and we actually do the same thing on an actual basis too. And it's really close every year. It's real close between, between the two. Now you are going to see that the expected costs are going up this year. But remember, expected costs are, there's a portion of that that's a fixed cost portion of reinsurance and administration, and there's also a portion of that that is, that is, that is actually part of the claim side too. The actual claim side of that is about $2.5 million, and the actual annual fixed cost is about $680,000. And so that's the overall expected. And then the maximum cost, the fixed cost stays the same, but the actual claims actually go up a little bit. So you could see that if the, if the city had its worst-case scenario and went through the maximum cost, which we've, we've not done that ever, in the probably 10, 12 years that I've been working with the city, they could, the city could potentially dip into fund balance a little over $600,000, $670,000, which would still put us just a tad, just a little bit around between that $900 and $1 million range. We don't think that'll happen, but you need to know, obviously, as a city council, that that is out there, is a liability. The reason it went up this year is we had two ways of doing this. The actual, the actual, when we were working with Blue Cross Blue Shield, they wanted a pretty big increase on the fixed cost because of the reinsurance hit that they've taken over the last few years. So we went and actually did 100, went from $100,000 individual stop-loss amount to $125,000. And we worked with them on the administrative cost and all of the different portions of the fixed cost. And that was actually, at the end of the day, we were able to get a $70,000 reduction in our fixed cost. But they had, they had to give it somewhere. So they did it in the soft dollar or expected claims cost, and we would much rather it be in the expected or maximum claims cost, which is a variable soft dollar, than hit us really with a big fixed cost increase. So I thought that was a real win for, for the city when, when Blue Cross was, was able to do that. And so that's why you see the expected cost being higher, but in actuality, the fixed cost actually went down, which really helps us a lot this year. This is the health insurance plan. They have a buy-up plan and a base plan. This is the exact same plan that they have currently, and the recommendation is to, is to leave the plan the same as it was last year. We made quite a few changes last year. If you remember, we made some pharmacy changes, we made deductible changes, out-of-pocket maximum changes, just a lot of, lot of changes across the board. And just again, felt like with, way we were setting with our fund balance, the way that we looked with our claims, about the same 12 over 12, and we just felt like that this was a good time to leave this alone and revisit it again next year if we needed to. This is something that we're recommending to make a change on this year. We've been on what's called a fully insured dental plan for several, several years. It was completely voluntary to the employees. And when you're on a voluntary dental plan, you really don't want to self-insure that because you don't want to put any liability on the city on a strict voluntary plan that the employees pay 100% into. So that's why that's always fully insured. But the recommendation and the proposal this year is to have the city pay for the employee-only portion of the dental plan, which in essence means that all of the employees of the district would have dental insurance, and then they would pay for their dependents if they wanted them on the plan. The plan design is exactly the same, but what we're going to do is we would, we would recommend to self-insure the dental plan at that point. Most companies your size that do a, that do a contribution or pay for the employee-only or pay for a large portion of the dental insurance, self-insure the dental because it actually, at the end of the day, you will start to build a reserve just like you have with medical insurance. It works the exact same concept as your medical plan. But we didn't want to change any of the benefits. We wanted those benefits to be the same, so employees won't see any difference there in their, in their benefits. It'll just be through Blue Cross Blue Shield this year instead of Lincoln Financial Group. Here's how this works. Currently, the employee-only rate is 29.68, and the employee independent rate is 30.97, 40.80, and 82.02 is the actual dependent rates. So this year, our recommendation is the... But we would recommend this be the payroll deduction for the employees on the employee and spouse, so they would get a $29.68 break on what they were paying for employee and spouse. Employee and children, that would be the same, less to 29.68. So those totals are the fully insured totals currently. So when you estimate the contributions from the city, it's 29.68. It's right at $110,000. And then the estimated contributions from the employees based on the current, on the current counts that we have right now, that's about 40, a little over $40,000. So the estimated total contributions from the city and the city employees are 151. The estimated fixed costs and projected claims are 145,000. That's typically a little conservative because we really don't know. There's literally a little over 100 people that, that are not on the plan now that will be on the plan, and we just don't know if there's going to be any utilization there. But we feel very comfortable that it will be right in that, in that number. It could be a little bit higher, it could be lower, but we feel like it's a good rate because that's what the fully insured rates were, and usually the fully insured rates are typically a little inflated because the insurance companies like to make money off the plans. Moving on to the ancillary coverages, the employer-paid life insurance at $20,000, had no rate adjustment, so it's a 0% increase. All the other voluntary products that the employees can participate in, voluntary term life, voluntary vision, and voluntary long-term disability, all at a 0% increase. So there's no changes whatsoever to, to those coverage as well. So that's the end of the PowerPoint presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions and go back to any slides that you would like me to at this time.
Okay. Thank you so much. Oh, council members, are there any questions or clarifications needed that you would like to ask of Mr. Summers?
I'd love to. Jeff, I appreciate it, and I appreciate you laying it out like this. This is super helpful. We've done the same thing, and my goodness, it can be complex and messy. One thing I'm kind of curious about, on the stop-loss, when we take the chin like we did this past year, so it's super helpful on the, the medical portion, when we look at the delta between the gross medical, sorry, I'm looking at slide four, when we look at the delta between the gross medical claims, the net medical claims, that June 18 to May 19, that delta would be what the stop-loss covered, is what I'm assuming.
Correct.
And so there's a huge number that was covered by the stop-loss. If we wouldn't have moved from 100,000 limit to, you said 120 or 125, I think, if we wouldn't have done that, how much variance is there in that stop-loss cost, that premium?
A little, great question. It's a little over $100,000.
Oh, man. Okay, so you mentioned that. Okay, that's what that was. And that's...
That was going to be, yeah, that was going to be the increase overall was, because we went from, currently, we estimated the fixed cost currently to be around 758. It was going to, it was going to go up another $100,000 more than that, and so we were able to get it down to 683 by, by moving the stop-loss to 125,000.
Got it. Okay. Boy, that's fortunate that we have that where it is and that we've thought through this. That 2 million is a, is a big number, and I imagine they weren't super happy about that, but that's, that's good. I appreciate it.
Well, that's, you have, one of the things that we have, and this kind of gets a little bit into the weeds sometimes, but there is, Blue Cross Blue Shield is also the reinsurance carrier as well, which I think makes a huge difference. When, when we're asked to look at other carriers, like a United Healthcare or a third-party administrator like a TML, they use outside stop-loss, which means they don't provide the stop-loss. You have to go to the outside stop-loss market. And I do that from time to time to see, to make sure we're competitive, or Blue Cross is competitive, if Blue Cross is the current carrier. But what happens a lot of times on that is a claim like you saw that was $1,600,000, you're due, the, the city is due $1,600,000 back. And that can take months because Blue Cross is still the administrator, that, or TML or whoever, United Healthcare would be the administrator, they have to send all that information to the stop-loss carrier, then they have to audit it, and it can go back and forth. And for the city to be out $1,600,000 for four or five months is never a good situation. And so it's one of the things I do love about Blue Cross's being the reinsurance carrier is you, they never, you get it back immediately. And so it's not, you never have to wait. And that's one of the things that, when I go out to get bids, it's one of the main things that I'm concerned about is when we're looking at other stop-loss carriers and other entities to look at, is how they handle the stop-loss, because as you see, there are claims out there that are well over $1 million these days.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Yeah, great question.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none. Jeff, I really appreciate the, I think it's, I don't recall it, seeing it before, but the, the year-over-year comparisons that you showed. That's a, that's a really, that's good data to sort of look at and see, make sure we're still doing the right, the right thing with the...
Yes, ma'am.
The right...
I believe so too.
Okay. Well, if there are no further questions or comments, Chair would entertain a motion for approval of Agenda Item Number Five.
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Five as written.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded that we approve Agenda Item Number Five as it is written. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Six, as Mr. Summers mentioned, we are going to look at the self-funded dental insurance plan. So go right ahead.
I think I talked about this earlier. I can, I'll revisit it again. So if we go back to the dental plan design, what you're seeing right there, again, that's, that is the same plan design as we have currently, and with Lincoln Financial on a fully insured basis. I think what I said earlier was that when you're completely voluntary and you're not, you're not paying any portion of that, it makes a lot of sense to be fully insured, to have no liability on the city at all. But with the city proposing to pay the employee-only piece of it, it really changes things. And most employers that we work with that do that, that are larger employers, will self-fund their dental insurance. So it makes a lot of sense to do that. The employees won't see any difference except that it's going to be through Blue Cross Blue Shield now instead of Lincoln Financial. But what they will notice that it's not going to cost, if you, if this passes and the city wants to do this, is that they'll be saving almost $30 a month. And I think that's a big deal. And everyone, unless they opt out for whatever reason, maybe they don't believe in dental insurance or whatever the case may be, then everyone should have dental insurance now instead of it being just on a voluntary basis and about 50 to 60% of the people participating. And so that's why I showed on my recommended funding that we leave the same fully insured dental rates that we have currently as the same rates, but the, the city pay the employee-only portion. And like I said before, I think, I think Pam had already budgeted for, just rounded it up to $30. But when we calculated it, the contributions from the city would be about 110,000, and contributions from the employees would be a little over 40. And so, and the estimated fixed costs and projected claims would be 145. Now again, that's an estimate. That could be up or down, but we typically see that over time you'll build a fund surplus. Nothing like you will in the medical, in the medical insurance, obviously, but you can build a fund surplus in the dental, on the dental plan, and I think it will over time. And it'll really help the employees out, especially paying for, all they now have to do is pay for their spouse, children, or family if they want to have their dependents on the plan, which I think is a great benefit if the city, if the city can do that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any questions about the dental plan? Okay. Hearing none. Chair will entertain a...
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Six as it is written.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded that we approve Agenda Item Number Six as it is written. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Summers. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Y'all have a great evening too. Thank you.
Of course. Agenda Item Number Seven, we are going to receive a presentation from Healthy Nacogdoches Coalition regarding proposed expansion of a smoking ban to include city park pavilions and playgrounds. And we have Kim Barton from the Healthy Nacogdoches Coalition. Good evening, Kim.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. We sure can.
Oh, good. This is my first virtual meeting, so I was a little nervous. And, okay, so I'm, I'm here tonight for, on behalf of the Healthy Nacogdoches Coalition as their director, to talk about the smoking ban. A decade ago, the Healthy Nacogdoches Coalition rallied the community to, to go for the smoking ban, with, the smoking ban, which went into effect in 2008. The Nacogdoches City Council passed the ban unanimously, and it prevented smoking in public places like bars and restaurants, offices, and public buildings. Now violators could receive up to a $200 fine, but from the beginning, from the very beginning, we saw enforcement as a community commitment rather than as a policing issue. So we took a transitional approach, and this is the people's smoking ban, and we knew if we wanted to make our community as healthy as it can be, that it would need, it would take buy-in from our citizens. So the coalition didn't ask for parks at the time that they went after the original smoking ban. The smoking bans were a new movement at the time. They, we frankly didn't want to complicate... They, we frankly didn't want to complicate the issue by asking for outdoor areas to be included. So we, the other thing that we didn't ask for at the time was the e-cigarettes. We went after the, we weren't sure about the hazards of the electronic cigarettes at the time. They weren't on our radar yet, really, as as being a hazardous thing. And we were, we just decided to bide our time. We were hoping they'd be a good tool for quitting. So in two thousand nineteen, we went back and we asked you for an amendment and you amended. And we're grateful for that. So years after the original ban, we included other partners in in that transition process to to a comprehensive smoking ordinance. We asked the baseball and softball and soccer associations to help, and they all saw value in declaring their facility smoke-free and did so. And so then we asked for the Nacogdoches Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to join us in this, in this quest to to have a comprehensive smoke-free community ordinance. So we're asking that the remainder of the public parks be specifically the playgrounds and the pavilions be declared smoke-free. That's why I'm here tonight, is to get that last element of the comprehensive ban in place. And at the time, the original smoking ban went into effect, over thirty percent of our residents smoked. And the most recent number showed that smoking has dropped to, in Nacogdoches County, to seventeen percent. Healthy Nacogdoches believes that's a healthy result and we're proud of it. And we would like to see the current ordinance enhanced to the point where it includes the remainder of the public parks, specifically the pavilions and the playgrounds. And that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just as a matter of clarification, it's my understanding that at, at the time that this was made an ordinance in two thousand eight, it gave the city manager the approval power to add the, what you are add, what you are wanting to add. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so council members, do you have any questions or would like some clarification or have any comments for Ms. Barton while she's here?
I do have a question. The e-cigarettes, is that part of your request also for the parks and pavilions?
And yes, we would request, that that's part of the original ordinance now. It was added in two thousand nineteen, so that would include the e-cigarettes for the parks.
Mayor, we're not going to have to vote on this, right?
Correct.
Okay. I, I mean, I'm, I'm totally for a smoking ban. I'm just not sure if data for e-cigarettes, especially smoking outside, is been fully vetted yet, and that would be my only concern. But if I did have to vote on it tonight, I would vote as a ban.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to mention to council that Brian Bray is on the call with us this evening. So if you have questions from the aspect of the parks, if you have a question for him, he would be happy to discuss also. In fact, before we go any further, Brian, is there anything you would like to add to what Kim Barton has said?
Mayor, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board did hear the request from Healthy Nacogdoches Coalition back several years ago when they started with the soccer fields and the baseball and the softball, and then this being the newest request, and they unanimously supported each of those requests. And and as you very well said, Mayor, that this is something the city manager can sign off, and that's the way the ordinance is worded. But this was such a big change, we felt like it was only appropriate to have council input before city manager proceeded.
Okay, thank you. So council members, any other questions that you might have?
No questions. I vote with Roy.
Okay, any, anyone else?
Me too, while we're taking tallies.
Okay. Well, if there are no further questions, Kim, thank you so much for joining us and presenting this information to us.
Thank you so much for having me.
Of course. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Uh huh. So we will move to Agenda Item Number Eight. And that is an approval of a contract between the City of Nacogdoches and LS Equipment Company. And we have Case Opperman, our Assistant Public Works Director.
Hi, Mayor, City Council. Can y'all hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening. We are asking you to consider approval of a contract between the city and LS Equipment Company, Inc. for the twenty twenty street paving project. On July twenty-first, we received three bids for this work. LS Equipment Company, Inc., also known as Lone Star Equipment, was our low bidder in the amount of one million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. LS Equipment was the contractor on last year's project where we improved Pearl Street as well as eight other residential streets. They've done a great job for us on that, and we're happy to have them back on this one. This project, just as a little background, will include paving improvements on ten city streets, which will be funded by both the CIP and street maintenance fees. It will include the, the last half of Pearl Street from West College all the way to West Austin, as well as Park Street and and several others. There will also be improvements at the Sunset Cemetery, including a new road around the new section that was just constructed. And that will be paid for by the Sunset Cemetery Fund, obviously. There were also two additive alternate bids for this project for manhole and water valve cover adjustments. We are not asking for approval for those today, so only the base bid is what we are asking you to consider for award. One point six eight million was right around the engineer's estimate for this. The second low bidder was Drury and Wheaton LLC at just thirteen thousand dollars more than that. So you can tell on a one-point, almost two million dollar project, to be within thirteen thousand dollars of each other, we've got very high confidence that those are very good bid numbers. So we have, we have no qualms about asking you to consider this. And so if you have any questions for me after, I can't remember if we do public comment, I'm sorry. But I'd be happy to answer any of those.
Okay, thank you very much. And yes, we, we would do public comment. We don't have anyone that called in this evening. So council members, is, or do you have any questions about Agenda Item Number Eight? Okay, hearing none. I think I can speak and say we're all excited to, we've been looking forward to seeing all these street improvements for this year.
Yes, ma'am. We are too. Very excited.
Okay, so Chair, with no further discussion, Chair will entertain a motion for Agenda Item Number Eight.
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Eight as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve Agenda Item Number As Presented. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Case.
Thank you very much, Council.
Agenda Item Number Nine, receive report regarding current financial standing of the Convention and Visitors Bureau due to COVID nineteen. Oh goodness, this is such, this is so difficult information. And so we are going to hear from Sherri Morgan, our C V B Executive Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I wish, usually I get to come before you and give, give you such good news. But you know, without, without some less-than-stellar news, that good news doesn't feel as good when it, when it does come. So we'll get through this. I believe in your packet, you did receive our most current financial statement. And just as a reminder, the way that we arrive at our budget, it's, it's a forecast and we work in partnership with Pam Kerbo there in the finance office. And based on the remittance of hotel occupancy tax, she tells us, gives us a range of, you know, consults with us to see if we know of anything new on the horizon that might impact it in in a different way than what her forecast indicates. And we arrive at a number, but that is, you know, that is a best estimate based on past performance. And that's just the best way that we have to do it, and we're not alone in in doing it that way. That's how, how most of these budgets are, are done from destination to destination. So as you can tell from our financial statement, our spending is right on track with having two months left in this fiscal year, if not a little lower, because we did, you know, hit the brakes on on spending when all of this started to come down in March. Unfortunately, what we don't have control over is the remittance. And we still have some properties that are delinquent in bringing their accounts current. And then we have, you know, some that have just been negatively impacted because of the pandemic. And case in point, last year we had a property that remitted fourteen thousand dollars for the month of May, twenty nineteen. For the month of May, twenty twenty is seven thousand. So you're looking at, you know, fifty percent cut on some of these properties. We do, they are metric that we use to base our hotel occupancy tax. And as a reminder, this does not include the Fredonia Hotel, who's opting out of reporting, but it comes from a group called the Smith Travel Research Report. For the month of June, which is the most current data we have, hotel occupancy tax was down forty, forty-four zero point two percent year-over-year. Year-to-date, we're down forty-five point two percent and forty-five point two percent for the running twelve months. Despite all of that, we just came through having a very successful sale on the trail weekend. We have a steady stream of visitors that, who are choosing to travel and are choosing to make Nacogdoches their destination. They're feeling the need to get out of their communities and take a day trip. And we are so happy and pleased and honored that they choose Nacogdoches to come. And I think our sales tax is indicative of that. You know, we, we're doing, faring better than other places in our sales tax. And I, I can attribute that to to the day travel that we see. We still are receiving a steady stream of information requests for people traveling or planning future trips to Nacogdoches. And so that is, that's a good sign as well. You know, when something dramatically changes or ends, it's really easy to fall into a trap of believing that things will never be the same again or will never be as good as they once were and to grieve it as a loss and consequently get stuck in this rut of lost mentality. But if we can manage to move forward and move away from that grief and loss to a place where we can release what we had with joy and with a thankfulness for the time that we did have to enjoy it, we open ourselves up to a reasonable expectation that what is to come will be far greater than what was. And tourism across the board is never going to be the same. And specific to Nacogdoches, it's never going to be what it was before. And we need to be okay with that because it really is okay, great, replaces good. It always has and it always will. So there is a lot that we are unable to do right now. We happen to be a part of an industry, travel and tourism and hospitality, that has some great tools at their disposal, and they've been using it to help us get as much information as we can to do the best we can with what we have. And they've been doing some really interesting traveler sentiment surveys. And what those are telling us is that sixty-seven percent of what is our traditional target market still doesn't feel safe traveling. Eighty percent of those surveyed feel strongly that masks should be worn as a safety precaution. And the survey covered both from a resident's perspective of having outsiders come into their community. They would like for the outsiders to be masked. And then also from a traveler's perspective, they're wanting to choose destinations who are exhibiting some very visible signs of taking this seriously and taking precautions. So it's a two-way street there. Forty-four percent of our traditional market would feel, say that they would feel more comfortable traveling if and when a vaccine is, is found and implemented. What we've also seen is while there is a large portion of, of travelers that do not feel comfortable, there is still those that do. And this millennial and Gen Z are very confident travelers. They do have money to spend. So what we're going to do at the C V B is we are going to save a place at the table for our tried-and-true audience that we love and that loves us. But we're really going to, we're calling it, we framed it as making hip story. H I P S T O R Y. We're going to reach out to this millennial and Gen Z, these generations, a different target audience for us. And we're going to introduce Nacogdoches's great charm, hospitality, and history to them and frame it in a way that is accessible to them and relatable to them and hopefully sway their decisions to bring them to Nacogdoches and see if that moves the needle. And if that doesn't work, you know what? We'll wake up the next day and we'll try something else. You know, and and all of this, I said it at the manager's meeting this morning, and it's eggshells. All of this could change in a second if we see another spike, if Governor Abbott has to issue more executive orders that further limits businesses that can be open, what they can do, the sizes of groups. You know, it's, you know, it, it can, it can change at a moment's notice. And the best thing that we can do, because there's a lot that we have no control over, the only thing we do, we can control is our response to the situation, be good stewards of what we do have and be thankful for what we do have and focus our energies on, on doing what we can. And I recently presented to Rotary and I always like to use Brian Holt Davis in those presentations. And I was reading his obituary and in, in his obituary was sort of his mantra that he lived by that without remedy should be without regard. And I've, I've really taken that to heart. If I were a tattooing person, I might tattoo that, but I'm not. My mother would spank me. But anyway, so that, that's where we are. We're gonna, you know, probably coming to you in the next quarter. I think Pam has mentioned that's how we're gonna look at the budget because we just, nobody knows. But I wanted y'all to have, I wanted you to know what I know and know that we are trying hard over at the C V B and just trying to make, make do.
Okay, well, Sherri, I think we all, you have our utmost sympathy and admiration because I know this is very, very difficult, but you have our support and we are going to help you. You are not alone. Tourism is big for Nacogdoches and our C V B is an integral part of our city. And I want to allow Council to ask you any questions or or make any remarks they would like to. Council members, would you like to ask Sherri any questions or make a comment?
Oh, sorry. Mr. Baldwin, you want to go?
No, go ahead.
I just wanted, I don't have a question. I just wanted to echo the mayor's sentiments that you have. Our total admiration. As you were speaking, I was like hearing it and 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 understanding that you were talking precisely about the C V B, but I was like applying it to the rest of my life. And it was, it was helpful to to hear that. And it's just, I feel very lucky that you are at the helm of our C V B. So thank you for, for, for your outlook on it and also for your ability to be dynamic in this unimaginable situation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Sherri, and I also want to thank you for the chamber morning. I mean, it's difficult to be able to have to come on and speak about the situation as it is now, but you are so positive, even like But you are so positive, even like tonight, you're, you're positive. And also in, in chamber meeting. Um, I just have one question to contain in the business pertaining to the business. The, like the contract for marketing, is that a one-year? So we, are we still on the contract with marketing for the rest of this fiscal year?
The way we handle marketing, we do have an agency of records. So we, we are working with Hancock and they do more of our um, our larger marketing buys. So our um, Texas Monthly, Texas Highways, anything through Tex dot, Texas Department of, of Transportation. Um, they do the creative for that and they do those buys. And when they do those buys for us, we get to, we get the privilege of using some grandfather discounts that they have with those. So we are in Texas Monthly like for some ridiculously low rates that if we lose that, we will never be able to recapture that. Um, and that is, that is nothing to do with me. That is solely based on Chris Hancock and his legacy of doing good stuff. Um, and then we do have a part of the rest of our remain, remainder of our marketing budget. We do in-house and those are smaller buys. So we don't have one marketing contract necessarily. We have um, issue insertion orders that we do with publications. And we choose every year which publications we want to be placed in that we know. And then we sort of play around. So we played around with some um, southeastern digital, online digital magazines that we've been able to get in at affordable rates as well. So we have several different marketing contracts.
Yeah. Uh, uh, Friday and Saturday, did we do, in your opinion, did we do well on the uh, sale on the trail?
We had, based on what we saw on Saturday alone, we had, I believe it was a hundred and twenty people that stopped into the visitor center to get maps. So that's not, that's not accounting for those that were able to access that information through our website and um, do it digitally without having to interface with that, with us. And then there were another forty-five on Sunday. Friday, it was hard to distinguish between our normal traffic and, and sale on the trail. But in my time here, the three years, this is by far, hands down, the most successful that it's been. We sort of had a perfect storm. It was great weather. Um, our retailers were hungry to participate. They really needed the business. And the participants um, were equally hungry to sort of get out and stretch their legs and extend their dollar along that El Camino Real. So it was really successful.
Okay, thank you. And uh, keep up the good work. I know it's a struggle, but uh, we support you.
Well, thank you. That means the world to me. It truly does.
Okay, any, anyone else?
Just one more, I suppose. Or, or maybe Jay has some too. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jay.
Oh, go ahead, Garth.
I was just gonna say, I, I absolutely appreciate your sentiments. Yeah, hang in there. I mean, that, I think it's really tempting when there is chaos in the world to put your head down and just look six to eighteen months. And for sure, we'll need to be nimble and make some adjustments. But you don't build anything great that way. You've got to look way further down the road. And so this too shall pass, just like everything else. And like Shelley said, I am super grateful that you're at the helm. You're doing a great job. Don't, don't let the, the, the kicks and the shins get you down too much. This is, this is just life. This is what all, all of our community and the businesses are dealing with. And it stinks, but such is life and it, and it will pass. So hang in there. You're doing a great job.
I, I appreciate that. I am, if nothing else, I am stubborn. So um, I will be the last one spending the last nickel with my clutched clawed hands on the light switch. I'm not going down without a fight.
Stubborn or relentless. I'll go for that.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, to basically parrot the other uh, council members and, and say that we really appreciate um, all of your, your efforts and your staff's efforts. And it is a brutal time for the hospitality industry right now. Um, and uh, I, I definitely appreciate y'alls, y'alls being creative and being adaptable and uh, and finding ways to, to uh, make as much lemonade out of these lemons as you can.
Thank you. And uh, I forgot to mention, you know, we're, we're always ninety days out. So we're already, our sights are, are down the road. Um, but Mother Nature has been kind to us this summer. We've gotten some really great rains. We're already looking at a forecasted beautiful record fall foliage. That's always a huge thing for us and it's inherently social distance friendly. So we're going to promote the all get out of that and um, whatever Christmas is going to look like. I'm assuming it'll still involve Jesus and um, Santa. So that, those are some two pretty stalwart givens and the rest are variables, but we're gonna, we're gonna do some stuff. So we are good.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Sheri.
Thank you so much, Sheri.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all.
Uh huh. Okay, we're going to move on to agenda item number ten. Presentation of the proposed twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget for the city of Nacogdoches and the setting of public hearing dates for both the budget and the tax rate. Uh, we have Pam Carbo, our Director of Finance.
Mayor Council, give me just a second. I'm going to try to uh, share my screen with y'all. Of course. See, I've got two screens. I'm hoping I do this right. Um, don't see it.
It's flashing on my screen.
Yeah, it's rotating here, but it's not doing anything. So give me just a second.
Of course.
Um, let's try that again. Present now.
Is it still flashing?
Yes.
It's fine for me. I can catch it in between blinks.
Your eyes are faster than mine. Hold on, I have help coming. Okay.
I, Mr. Baldwin, I can't time my blinks like.
Well, see, you don't have enough experience as I do.
It's fine.
Did you see it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm just not going to see it. Okay. Well, I'm not going to be able to see it there. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to follow along. Um, okay, so this is somewhat of a long presentation. Of course, the budget always is. Um, I would ask if any of y'all come across something that you want to stop and ask questions or for me to uh, expand on. Just interrupt me because I'm afraid by the time we get to this eighteenth slide, we, we may have, have missed our opportunity to discuss it. So please feel free to stop me at any point. Um, just as a background, we're going to talk about property taxes first. Um, last year, the legislature passed Senate Bill Two, which um, made some significant changes to property taxes. Those um, changes are effective with any taxing period after January one. So this will be for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Um, one of the greatest things that it changed is it limits the amount of tax increase that a municipality can pass at three and a half percent, where it was previously eight percent. Um, the other large thing that changed is there's new terminology. Um, what was the effective tax rate is now known as the no new revenue tax rate. And the rollback tax rate is now the voter approval tax rate, which both of those actually now probably makes sense to people that don't know a whole lot about property taxes. So they are a little more um, uh, self-explanatory now. Um, the numbers that we received from the appraisal district last week show an assessed value um, on July the twenty-fifth of one billion, seven hundred and eighty-one million, one ninety-nine, one eighty-two. Um, this includes about ten million dollars in new property added to the roll. Um, which is a probably about twice what it was last year. Um, the prior year for the nineteen twenty um, fiscal year, our tax rate was point six one four per one hundred dollar valuation. Using this new assessed value, we've calculated a no new revenue tax rate of point six one six. And you'll notice that that for the first time, our no new revenue was effective tax rate is actually higher than the prior year rate. And the reason that is, is because our assessed value actually went down um, from last year. Because you back out that ten million dollars in new property. And when, once that's backed out, our assessed value this year was actually down from, from twenty nineteen. Then with the three and a half percent uh, increase factored in, the voter approval tax rate calculates to sixty-three point three eight four cents per that, uh, per hundred dollar valuation. The budget that you have um, before you is actually built on a proposed tax rate of point six three per one hundred dollar valuation. Of that, nine point eight million is for operations and maintenance. And one point three seven three is for debt service on existing bond issues. This will generate us about three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in new revenue for next year. Of that, sixty thousand dollars is for the new construction and a little over three hundred thousand is from the rate increase itself. Um, let me back up just one second. Um, also here, there is another change that Senate Bill Two um, is proposing, and this will actually be presented to y'all at the next council meeting. Going forward, you actually have to vote on proposing a tax rate. So in September, you'll vote on adopting the tax rate, ratifying the tax rate. But in, before we can actually even finish our public hearings, y'all have to actually take a record vote on the fact that you want to propose a budget with this tax rate. So I will be asking y'all on the eighteenth meeting to actually vote on proceeding with a budget based on sixty-three cents per hundred dollar valuation. So that will be something that's a little bit new that we'll have to do going forward. Um, so, um, just as a um, FYI, I always do this every year to kind of show the um, the, the impact of, of a tax increase. We, we use a average home value of a hundred and eight thousand. And this comes from the appraisal district. I think this was last year's average. Um, before any exemptions. And so um, under the proposed tax rate of sixty-three cents, that is a tax liability of a little over five hundred and forty-four thou, of five hundred and forty-four dollars a year. Now, have we adopted the no new revenue tax rate? That would be about five hundred and thirty-two dollars. So you'll see that, that we actually are, are requesting a twelve dollar and ten cent in annual increase in the tax liability on a home value of a hundred and eight thousand. Of course, you can multiply that um, on up for, for um, home values that, that exceed the hundred and eight thousand. Um, jumping over to sales tax, the budget that you have, we were, we were very confused on what to do with sales tax because to this day, I think Larissa and I both have discussed this at, at link. It just makes no sense what's going on with our sales tax. Um, we expected to see some really large decreases. We got lucky in the fact that the one month that we expected the largest increase, we ended up having a significant audit adjustment that we hadn't had in years. Um, and then last month, we just saw, we just saw a good bounce back and our retail was up, I believe, about fifteen percent in retail alone. And so, um, honestly, this was a very difficult thing for me to, to anticipate what next year might bring. Um, everybody still says that we are going to see some additional um, uh, economic downturns coming forward in the next few months. So it was very hard for me to, to budget um, this particular item. I did go ahead and start with a two percent decrease over last year's um, anticipated revenues. Um, and like I think we, we discussed in prior meetings, honestly, all that, that I can do going forward is just to keep y'all up to date every quarter. Come to y'all and let y'all know we're staying within our anticipations or it's, it's not, it's not going well. Um, now, keep in mind, this is a draft budget. It certainly can change between now and the time that you, that you adopt it. We will have uh, one more month of sales tax figures that come in next Wednesday morning. So I'm anxiously awaiting that. So we will have that before we come back to y'all on the eighteenth. Um, so maybe we'll have another month to see if we truly are going to stay um, stay on the, on the positive side with sales tax. We just don't know right now. So basically, we're just going to try to come to you every quarter and keep you updated on what revenues are doing. If they are falling behind, then we may look at having to, to do some, some cost cutting measures for next year. But um, right now, we, we just have, have just had to kind of throw a dart and, and hope we, hope we hit something. Um, to jump to general fund, um, the proposed budget includes twenty-six point four five million dollars in anticipated revenues. Um, most of this, this percentage split, split is pretty much spot on what it's been for the last several years. As you can see, historically, thirty-five to thirty-six percent of our, our general fund revenue comes from property taxes and twenty-four to twenty-five comes from sales taxes. So our other revenue, little piece of the pie, that's going to be court fines. It's going to be rec center fees. It's, it's going to be animal shelter fees. It's building um, permits. It's just a, it's a lot of things, but it only encompasses a very small portion of our revenue because general fund is, is very highly um, tax driven. Um, when you look at your expenditures for the general fund, this is by function. You will see that public safety, of course, is a uh, sixty-one percent piece of that pie. Fire and police make up the, the largest um, section of our employees. And so you'll need to see on the next slide that personnel costs of, of course, are, are a big piece of that. General government covers everybody in City Hall and um, uh, highways, streets, public works. Um, and then of course, Brian and his folks in the library rec center, that's the cultural and recreational. So for the most part, um, a big chunk of the, of the general fund pie is, is public safety. And here again, personnel costs, this is salaries and benefits. Um, make up almost eighty percent of the general fund. So when thi- this is, this is kind of the, the, the problem with, with operating the general fund and trying to say, okay, we're going to, we're going to reduce costs. We, we're having some issues. Revenues aren't coming in. It's very difficult to reduce cost in the general fund without making some bad, you know, hard choices for personnel. Because thankfully, we have been very lucky. We have not had to lay people off. Lots of cities have had to do that over the last few years. We have not. Um, what we have been able to do is to um, put, we put, put a hiring freeze in, in, in March. And so any open positions, if they were not um, absolutely necessary, we, we were not filling those for a time. And so that does save some, some money there. Um, but like I said, personnel cost is a, is a big driver in the, in the general fund. And so um, it becomes very difficult when revenues go down um, to actually save money because it is, it is all standard uh, personnel-driven costs. Um, for the twenty twenty-one year, um, we were very lean on what we uh, are proposing as far as capital, equipment and improvement expenditures. This is a very low year for us. And the only reason a couple of these large items are in here is because we honestly are, are hitting end of life. Um, one of them, the IT phone system upgrade, our phone system is um, basically going to be unserviceable this coming fiscal year. And so we're going to be forced into um, in, into looking at, at some options on upgrading the phone system. Um, fire station, um, y'all know fully, uh, fire engines are extremely expensive. Um, this is going to be an engine uh, refurbishment for two hundred thousand dollars. And then fire, this is, this eighty-four thousand here is for several different sets of turnout gear, some um, uh, breathing apparatus. There's, there's quite a few things. Instead of listing them all on the, on the sheet, they are in your budget atomized. Um, and then of course, the CIPs, the city hall roof replacement, we're at the point where um, if we don't get this, this uh, roof replacement done, this is going to call, cost us significant amounts of money um, and damages and, and corrections over the next year or two if we cannot get this roof replaced. So of course, the street rehab, that is, that is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, that council has committed annually to funding um, for our street rehab. So that is, that is not a new item. That's just one that, that we continue to try to fund um, annually. Jumping over to the utility fund, um, not a lot of changes here. Um, there was a little bit of bump in water revenue only because we are implementing year five of the five-year phase in of the water. only because we are implementing year five of the five-year phase-in of the water and sewer rates that that council adopted five years ago. So we'll see a little bit of bump there. But for the most part, this is pretty, pretty normal for the last several years. Depending on rainfall, sometimes we make the budget, sometimes we don't. But this is, this is a pretty good target for us if if we have a have a normal year. Dry years will make much more than this, and wet years, we won't quite, won't won't quite make it. On utility fund expenses by classification, these cost percentages are pretty much in line with what we've had in the past. Those sundry charges, those are bond payments, this principal interest on bonds. And sometimes it throws people off because it doesn't really make sense, but that is what that is. And of course, you'll see here that personnel costs don't make up near the the piece of the pie that that it does in general fund. And then, of course, the interfund transfers. I know we've discussed those in the past. Those are transfers from the utility fund to the general fund. There's two different transfers. One is for operational transfers. So they transfer, let's say, a third of the finance department budget for the work that I do for utility sanitation. So we take our budgets and I don't, I'm paid by the general fund, but I work for the utility and sanitation just as much. I have to do the budgets for them just the same. And so we split those costs and they re- they reimburse the general fund for the work that the general fund employees do on their behalf. There's also a franchise fee that the utility and the sanitation fund reimbursed to the general fund, just like any other utility in the city. So just like Encore or Sutton Link or AT&T, any of those folks have to pay a franchise fee to the city as a proprietary fund. The water sewer and sanitation system all pay a franchise fee to the general fund, and so that is included in that twenty-three percent as well. For capital on utility fund, capital equipment is very low this year. The customer service, I'm gonna be honest with you, I forgot what that was. So give me just a second. The utility construction and the wastewater department, those both are are replacement vehicles. And then the CIP is the last probably two pages of your budget. And that details many, many projects that are ongoing in the water and wastewater distribution system. Oh, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the customer service department, that is an upgrade to our four AMR, our automated meter reading system, the collecting units. Those were set in two thousand and eight. And we are time to replace those those units. This will actually upgrade us and get us to the, to the new system that they are selling to everyone else. Ours is basically a one-way system. This will upgrade us to a, a two-way system. Right now, the meters send us readings on an hourly basis. This will allow us to actually ping those meters and get a reading when we want. And so that's, that is going to be an upgrade that's needed in order to keep the AMR system up and running. Jumping over to the sanitation fund, proposed revenues here, again, eighty-one percent of this is coming from sanitation charges that are on utility bills. A smaller portion of that is going to be landfill gate receipts. And if you'll recall, several years ago, we split out sanitation fuel charges from the actual rate that we charged for sanitation because fuel had been fluctuating so much. And so that is a separate revenue item now. These are all within the, pretty much the same that they have been several years in in a row. We have not proposed an increase in sanitation rates for the twenty twenty-one year. Expenses by classification here, personnel cost is about twenty-eight percent. You'll see all the other smaller ones. Here again, interfund transfers is a pretty significant portion of the sanitation fund. This, again, franchise transfers and operational transfers. Because the sanitation fund is a little bit smaller budget overall, less than five million dollars. When you still take those general fund budgets and split them in a percentage-wise, i- it takes a little bit more out of the sanitation fund in order to fund that. So the interfund transfers are a little bit higher in the sanitation fund than they are in the utility fund. Capital equipment, we have our annual about a hundred thousand dollars that we spend on new cup dumpsters and carts. That comes out of operations, out of our depreciation account this year. We actually had some pretty significant needs. This year, we needed two additional roll-off trucks. If you'll remember, the last several years, we've been buying two garbage trucks per year. This year, Carrie indicated that that the roll-off trucks were were in more need this year. And then a compactor and a track loader, both for for the landfill. And those, of course, are are relatively expensive equipment. But we just, we just felt like this, we were going to spend a lot more on maintenance if we didn't go ahead and replace these, this equipment this year. So we have proposed to go ahead and requite, replace both those large pieces of equipment. And I'm sure that I probably will think of more things, but I just wanted to kind of give you some updates on some noted things that we did this year that may be a little bit different than in prior years. The budget that that you have been presented in order for us to go into the next year, being conservative, not knowing exactly what revenues we're actually going to do, we ask all of our departments to take a look at any open positions that they had that were vacant and tell us if any of those they could put off filling for a fiscal year. And so we did have quite a few departments that were willing to to try to forego filling those positions for us next year to try to to save some money in the general fund, just not knowing what was gonna happen with with revenues. Just in as as an example, we had a couple of positions at the municipal court. We have a position at the vehicle maintenance department. HR gave up a position that they have that is their office assistant. We had several that that were willing to forego some positions next year to give us a little bit of a cushion in case our revenues do fall off and we and we see some some negative economic impacts. Those positions are not cut, they are just not budgeted. And so those, all of those will be reassessed with the twenty-one, twenty-two budget cycle. Another thing that we changed this year, if you'll remember, three years ago, city council opted to begin funding a economic development fund, kind of to mirror a four A, four B city. So we started with a one cent, basically a one cent property tax amount. And then each year, we were multiplying that. Well, that is not sustainable, unfortunately. Uh, there was just no way I could, I could add six hundred thousand dollars to the budget this year to make that happen. I have discussed this with Larissa. We feel like we have right at a million dollars in that fund right now. And so we are, we are actually going to go this year and just request that we go back to the year one transfer amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Until the economy gets back, you know, on on track, I feel like an annual one hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution to that fund is probably sustainable. Increasing it every year may not be. So the budget you have is is including a hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer instead of a four hundred and fifty like there was last year. A- as Jeff Summers mentioned earlier, we have we have not increased the premiums for health insurance for the next fiscal year. And we have included the dental insurance, city-paid dental insurance, and you and y'all did adopt that earlier. So that is already included in your budget that you have. Um, I did mention that year five of the previously adopted utility rate increase is is built in here. Another thing that we did this year was create a sanitation administration department. We have a couple of employees that were in the Politeworks Administration Department who ninety-nine percent of their job function was sanitation. And so in order to actually correctly reflect their expenditures, we have moved them to the sanitation department and created an administrative department within that fund. And they will be moved there because, like I said, ninety, over ninety percent of their their job functions are sanitation. And so that that also relieved a little bit of of strain on the general fund. Another thing, and I know that that council has committed to to wanting to do this in the past, that unfortunately, due to COVID and the uncertainty of the economy, we had to push off. But we do have a compensation plan and a salary survey that we had a company do several months ago. We would like to be able to start implementation of that to get our employees to a accurate pay range. But we're going to wait and and assess what's going on with revenues next year. Like I said, we'll do that quarterly, but I anticipate that it will be at least mid-year before we're we're actually over the hump enough to know that we're going to have significant enough funds to to cover implementation of that compensation plan. One thing that is included in the current budget, if if we do present and 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 adopt the budget as it is presented with a sixty-three cent property tax, that creates that additional three hundred thousand dollars plus of of new revenue. That new revenue has not been appropriated to anything. It will be held in, for possible implementation of this compensation plan. So what we don't want to do is to get mid-year and say, okay, it's time to do it and not have the money to actually implement our salary survey and our compensation plan. And so that is what the the property tax increase is going to be set aside for is to to do a possible implementation of the compensation plan mid-year. I think, oh, so that brings us to the budget calendar. Tonight, I'm gonna ask that y'all vote to adopt the, or actually to set the public hearings for August the eighteenth and for September the eighth. Understanding that August the eighteenth, we're going to have a budget workshop. We're also going to have the vote on the proposed tax rate, which is the new, the new item that we haven't had to do in the past. And then public hearing number one on the budget and the tax rate. Then, you know, of course, September meetings, we did have to move in order to to make sure that we stay within all the legal requirements to get the the budget adopted in a timely manner. So I will ask that between now and August the eighteenth, anything that any of council has questions that are included in the current budget as it's proposed or things that that maybe are not there that you had anticipated being there, please reach out to me. Because I would like to be able to come to y'all with that, at that workshop and let's talk through and do some proposed changes to that budget. Because once we get to the September the eighth meeting, we need that budget to be as close to what we adopt as possible. So we still have have the eighteenth to make any changes that that y'all desire to do, to add or to take out. And anything that I can do to get y'all information prior to that eighteenth meeting, please don't hesitate to to reach out to me. And we'll make sure that we can get that workshop set and and get y'all what you need in order to make those decisions. And I think that's it.
Okay, uh, well, I would, I'd like to thank our interim city manager, Chief Jim Seavy and the executive staff for working with you on this. But I also know that the bulk of of all this work and responsibility landed square on your shoulders this year. And you've done an extraordinary job, especially with the, I know you have the financial expertise, but now with the flexibility and the creativity and the pressure of having it on your shoulders. So we appreciate you very much. Council, you're so welcome. Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions or need any clarifications on anything that Pam went over?
That would be great. Pam, you mentioned pretty early on that excluding new instruct, uh, construction, that the assessed value was down. I think it'd be helpful just to get an idea of how that happens. I think most people probably saw their assessed values go up if if nothing.
You know, actually, when we got our our preliminary preliminary numbers in April, we were a little bit shocked at how much they had gone down. And and they were adjusted before we got our July numbers. But actually, our decrease was in the minerals and industrial category. It was not the residential and commercial. It was the minerals and industrial ca- uh, category. And so can't specifically say what industries, but you you can pretty much, you know, tell from those particular types of 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 the category itself. There there were some businesses that are no longer here. Minerals, of course, that that fluctuates greatly. But that's, that's where we lost the the bulk of our of our assessed value within that that particular category.
Got it. That makes sense. Thank you.
When Corstens on the furloughs, the sixth position on the furloughs, is that for a set time period or is that looked at for the budget year?
Well, now, it is, right now, I have not budgeted any of the whole entire fiscal year for those positions. But if revenues come in and each quarter we come in and we see that our revenues are actually up over what we even had anticipated, then yes, if if that is an an option that the city council can say, go ahead and fill those positions mid-year. But at this point, there there is, those positions have been, you know, for the entire twelve months of the fiscal year, we've removed the entire salary and benefits.
And benefits? I figured the salaries for sure, but I didn't realize.
Yeah, because if they're not filled, then we won't be transferring the money for the health insurance and the TMR. None of that's gonna be happening, and so none of that is budgeted.
So that's basically a layoff.
But no, 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 these are for vacant posi- positions. Not going to hire, right?
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, then the chair will entertain a motion, please. If someone does make the motion, we need to include the dates for the public hearings of August eighteenth and September eighth of twenty twenty.
Could you repeat those dates for me? I'm sorry. August eighteenth and September?
Eighth.
Let's see. So I I'll make a motion that we set the official public hearing dates for both the budget and tax rate on the dates of August eighteenth and September eighth.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded that we set the public hearing dates for both the twenty twenty twenty-one, uh, let's see, it'd be twenty-one, twenty-two budget and tax rate, August eighteenth and September eighth. And all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. We do not have executive session tonight, so that concludes our meeting of August the fourth, twenty twenty. And thank you all for.
Good evening, everyone.